Let's all rise, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
One nation indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the vision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having a date time placed thereof, sent to the record, Ridgewood News and/or town newspapers, the constituent parks, our libraries, as well as posting the school district's expressible office, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, smoking for use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school, including anyone in school grounds, including but not limited to parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to fine not to exceed $100. Roll call. Claudia?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tracy Allen?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Jill?
Here.
Al?
Here. I will read the mission statement tonight. The missions, mission of Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a health, healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and other, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community in an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. We will move into Patrick Fletcher's presentation for tonight. Patrick?
Thank you. So I, I'm just gonna preempt some of the issues and questions and go to address where we are right now regarding staffing and the other PPE that we were, that we were in need of. So some, not all, but some of the PPE has arrived, it's rolling in on a daily basis, and I do not anticipate that that will create an issue for us further down the line in October. Clearly, we slowed the pace of our addressing the individual school buildings, particularly because staff are in the buildings, in the facilities. Last week, they were in for professional development, and most staff are arriving daily to deliver their remote instruction from the school facility. As I mentioned before, we had two large buckets of concerns regarding staffing, those with medical or requesting medical accommodations, and those requesting childcare accommodations. The, where we stand at this particular moment is that all but six, all but six medical issues are resolved. However, we are experiencing some additional requests coming in along the way, which we are dealing with on an expedited basis. The, the issues related to the CARES Act, we are moving aggressively to be in a position that should someone require a leave, that we will have sufficient staff to be able to accommodate that. I placed a, an ad in the paper, and we've been sourcing out to other locations that, that requested over seventeen different types of positions, which would accommodate any issue that we had related to the medical accommodation and/or childcare. Clearly, we're competing with other school districts that are in the area. As many of you know, our neighboring school district, Paramus, subsequently delayed their opening as well, and there are a number of other high school districts in New Jersey that have delayed their opening as well. So we are competing against a larger group of individuals, but we've begun to move aggressively here and will continue to monitor the situation so that we can proceed with the return to in-person instruction on October 5th. Is there a possible scenario that schools would remain closed? Of course there is. That's particularly related to whether there was a executive order or an uptick of the transmission of the virus, but that would be something that's out of our control. Is it possible under other circumstances? Of course it is, because you can't predict everything that comes down but, the road, but I think we are significantly in a better position than we were two weeks ago. That concludes my report at this particular point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fletcher. I'm gonna go right into questions, on agenda items, which Patrick's presentation was one. Before we get into the questions, though, I would like to
John, here.
I would like to just say, we, we understood that getting information out to the community has been, or was, slow. In the past week or so, we've tried to get as much information out as we could. The middle school principal, Mr. Friedman, put out his email for the opening of school, as did Mr. Heinz for the high school building. Mr. Principay recently updated the SAT date for Riverdale seniors only and how to get your children signed up for that. Today, an email went out from Mr. Friedman for the middle school back-to-school night, which is tomorrow night, and Mr. Heinz, I'm sure, will have an email coming out shortly for the back-to-school night at the high school building, which is a week from Thursday, 9/17. So as we move into the questions from the public, if you're going to write in a question or ask a question personally, please state your name and your town, and as always, you're limited to three minutes. So if anyone has any questions out there, Mark, let's get started, please. Please raise your hand or ask a question in chat, please. Ed Iturate, please.
Hi, yes, it's Ed Iturate's family from Oradell. Are there any other concessions that the teachers are asking for that you feel you won't be able to meet in, by October 5th? Or any other?
Not, not, at this moment, when I'm answering your question, no, there hasn't been any, anything particularly requested that we haven't tried to address in some way, shape, or form. I, I think a lot of things were, it was helpful to get people back into the facility so that they could, you know, have a better understanding of what's, what's actually happening in the building.
Next question, Joan Kristin. Joan Kristin, please unmute yourself. Any other questions?
I, I do have another, another question. How, how many candidates have you gotten in response to the job openings, have you, or if any?
We, I, the exact number, I don't know, but we did receive quite a few. Clearly, we have to go through them to determine certification, experience, whether their certificates are finalized, et cetera, but we did, and we're still getting them.
Thank you. And if I can, just one more question. How many teachers are currently working remotely? And how many, roughly what percentage are, are working remotely versus in the school?
I would probably say about ten, twelve percent are in, in some form of completely remote situation, and it is, it's, I'm very encouraged by the staff that's here in both facilities, to two different buildings, the sheer number and the excitement that's been around.
There's already a hundred and two being there. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next question is a written question. It's from Julie Leopold from Oradell, and the question is, will PSATs be held in October as usual for juniors?
Yes. The, I think it's October 19th, I'd have to confirm it, but it should be up on our website by now. There is a, there's a National Administration of the ACTA, National Administration of the SAT, a Riverdale-only administration of the SAT, which the information went out earlier this week, or at the end of last week, I'm, I'm sorry, and you can get, if you missed it, you can get the information from the guidance department, and that's gonna be for seniors only, so that we can make sure that all our seniors have the ability to take it, and that will be on September 23rd. And then the PSAT is offered also only to Riverdale residents, and that is, that Riverdale community members or students, and that is also scheduled. The information is up on the website for that, and if you have any questions, Mrs. Stubber is the contact at the high school for the PSAT.
Next question is Elaine Dong from Oradell, and she asks, what are you doing to get kids with learning issues like ADHD back in the building sooner?
That's, that's a great question. We are, we are hopeful that we will get all of our students who are in our LLD program back into the facility. I did review a plan earlier today that needs a little tweaking, and, because we're trying to marry in-person with the same schedule that we have for virtual, and I anticipate that we'll, we'll be able to release something in the next day or so. That's a small number of the students, but hopefully it'll get us a better opportunity to bring them all back. It'll be in both buildings. If, and I also want to encourage that if you, if you are a parent of a child who has an IEP, you would speak with your case manager if there are some learning issues that are being affected by the virtual learning. We do have some folks available to work with them directly, but I would go through the case manager. If your child has a 504 plan, you should consult with the building principal. So that would be Rich Friedman in the middle school and Jack Heinz here at the high school.
Next question is Jen Kelly from River Edge. Once the children are back in school, will they be fully on their computers versus live teacher interaction?
I'm trying to, to answer that question without creating more of the concern. So every student, whether they're in-person or remotely, will be logged in to the environment so that the students have the opportunity to collaborate with each other. But the, that, well, that's not the only mechanism for a student that's in the, basically in the classroom to interact, because obviously they have fellow students right there with them and the presence of the teacher. But so that there is an opportunity for collaboration between in-person and virtual, every student will be logged in through the class, throughout, throughout class.
Vicki Bowman?
Hi, how is everybody tonight?
Fine, thank you.
Based on the information you were just speaking about, my question is combined with the replacement and the virtual teaching. So the replacements that you're currently looking for, for in-person teaching, are they to be in the classroom while the teacher is teaching from home virtually? Or are these replacements that are for teachers that are not coming back to school?
These are based upon the, the largest pool of teachers who may elect some form of leave, whether that be through FMLA, federal medical, federal leave of absence, or, I'm sorry, family leave of absence, or still have childcare issues after
At this, at this point, you still don't know who is requesting leaves yet?
No, no, I'm answering your question. This is the widest pool of people that we have. We do, we do know who has been approved under Americans with Disabilities Act and are, you know, making all the steps necessary so that even when the students are back in session, there's a person in front of the classroom for supervision, as well as the fact that the class is participating remotely.
So that brings me back to some of these replacements are to be in the classroom while the teacher is teaching virtually from home, and some are for replacements who are, who are not coming back. So my, my question is this, if somebody has a childcare issue, is it a mandate that they go out on the leave, or are they allowed to continue teaching from at home and not go out on the leave because they are able to teach virtually from home?
At this point, we anticipate that childcare-related issues will be resolved prior to October 5th, and that all, the only folks who are working remotely on a regular basis would be those granted a leave under Americans, or granted an accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Okay. So your hopes are that if somebody is not covered under the American Disability Act, they will be back in the classroom teaching?
Yes.
Wonderful, that's great news. Thank you.
You're welcome, and I, I should also say that staff members, as they resolve issues, alert, and, you know, I'm very pleased with the progress thus far.
That's really good to hear, thank you.
Eddie, one more question.
Mark, there is a confirmation from Mr. Principay on that PSAT.
If anybody sees it, it's a, PSAT date is Saturday, October 17th. More information will be forthcoming within the next few days.
Thank you, Mr. Principay. I know it's about the 18th time you've told me that, I apologize.
Ed Iturate, please.
Sorry, just a follow-up question on the childcare topic. How, how many days are the, under the CARES Act, how many days are the teachers permitted to take leave on the basis of childcare?
It's up to 12 weeks.
Up to 12 weeks? Okay.
Correct. And, and it's at a reduced level of pay. It's, it's paid leave, but it's a reduced level of pay, and it's up to 12 weeks.
But, but given, given that it's up to 12 weeks, you're still confident that the childcare issues will be resolved by October 5th?
Yes, today, yes.
Thank you.
Mark, anything else? Okay, if we have, if that's it. You have to type your name and town, please, if you're gonna write in a question. Thank you.
We have a written question from Rita Cookson from River Edge. I'm confused after Mr. Fowman's question, are the teachers you are hiring are going to be instructing or monitoring students whether they receive remote instruction? Or are they replacements for teachers who are taking leave under FMLA or Family CARES Act?
It is primarily to address any possibilities for anticipated leaves that arise based upon the pool of people that caused me to make the recommendation that I did a couple of weeks ago. Could one of those people be hired as like a permanent sub to provide some supervision? The answer is yes, but that may, but I'm not certain that that's going to be the case that's necessary.
Next question is from Amy Yee from River Edge. Is, is there a plan to offer ACT to Riverdale students only? The 912 one is at full capacity.
Unfortunately, ACT is less willing to work with local school districts to provide school district-only options. We've been trying to address the matter with them and have been unsuccessful thus far.
Next question is from Greg Darian of Oradell, and it is, it is my understanding the collaboration is turned off within teams. Even breakout rooms are being discouraged as students can use too much teams functionality. The only collaboration that is enabled is within OneNote, and that process is cumbersome and not in real time. What is a district doing to overcome these issues?
I, I, it's, that's news to me. I, I am in, I am aware of communications from the supervisors to the teachers regarding those particular options that are available for teams. It is something that we provided professional development on. So if, if there's an issue with a particular teacher or staff member, I would bring it to the attention of the principal in the building. Now, they may, you know, direct you to a supervisor or whatnot, but that sounds to me like it's a particular issue in a particular class, because there's been no district decision to reduce those options or their flexibility and availability to staff.
And another question from Rita Cookson. Is there a possibility for classes to be recorded in teams like this meeting so students can go back and watch a lesson?
It's, it's not our common practice to do that. I think I would, again, have a dialogue with the individual teacher of, of the students that are involved, because we, we have provided opportunities for teachers to create videos and do videos and leave information available on their particular pages so that students could access it at their time. We have not given, I have not given a directive that all lessons be recorded. I don't, I don't, it's too cumbersome at this particular point to do that.
And Ed Iturate, you have your hand raised?
No, sorry, that must have been from before, no more questions. Thank you.
Vicki Bowman, please.
I'm, I'm gonna remain positive that the students will be back in school on October 5th. So prior to October 5th, will they be receiving the rules and guidance that they need to be following? And I'm hoping it's going to be no tolerance. If they're not followed, they're not allowed to come back into the school. So has there been any thought put into that yet, what the rules are, what the consequences are, and what's gonna be expected from them? For instance, is there, are there going to be antibacterial wipes that they have to walk in the classroom, take a wipe, wipe their desk, wipe their hands, and throw it out? Like, these are the kind of things I'm talking about.
Right, there, no, that's an unrealistic procedure, as, as an example. All the classrooms, though, have been equipped with hand sanitizer for student use and for staff use throughout the facility. But as, as far as like what their expectations are, yeah, doc, the principals will continue to address those issues over the course of the next couple of weeks. But basically, you know, students have to understand that it's gonna be a very different world than they were in, and I, and I think all of us are getting a flavor for that in school, because you'll, you have to walk in a particular direction, you have to try to keep socially distant, you're gonna be wearing a mask all day long that you're in the facility, and it's gonna be quite a bit different than it has been before. We're requiring all students and staff members and visitors to wear masks, so will there be consequences for those who do not do so? Sure, the answer is yes, it will follow our student discipline procedures with that as a particular thing as we go along the way, but I, I think we have to just understand that it's a, gonna be a new experience for everybody, it's gonna take some time to get used to, and I'm, I'm hopeful that students will be as responsible thus far as our athletes, band members, and cheering have been thus far.
Why wouldn't, I, I'm confused, because I don't think if they're, if the students don't receive any type of written guidance, they're not gonna know what's expected from them. So I believe sometimes they have to sign off on like the new, I, I don't remember, but some of the papers, like no bullying, or the school policies that need to be followed. So perhaps there could be something that comes out, what's expected of them, that they need to sign off on, so they're well aware, and then if they don't follow the rules, there's gonna be penalties.
That's a good suggestion, we'll take a, take a look at that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You're most welcome.
Hey, Mark, I just wanna, there was a question typed in here, I think it was Brian Khan. Patrick, does your PPE equipment include plastic face shields?
Yes, we do have them, it's, not everyone will be, will be utilizing them, but they are available. And we're not providing those to And we're not providing those to, to every student. We're not providing masks to every student. Do we have them available for emergency uses? The answer is yes, but a face shield's still used in a combination with a mask.
Okay, we have something from Svetlana Nor from Oradell. I suggest that classes be recorded because my son was left in the waiting room today by his teacher for 20 minutes and missed the lesson for the day. Apparently, the teachers don't check if students are in the waiting room. I was told that if you go too early or a minute too late, they don't get in. That is completely unacceptable.
Again, I would direct that to, absolutely correct. I am not defending anybody if, if in fact what you just said has taken place. I have no reason to believe that it didn't. But I would direct that to the principal's office, who will farm it to the right location to address that. Again, you know, there's some stumbling that's continuing to go on. And I would imagine that that was just a mistake. I hopefully it was, wasn't deliberate in any way, shape or form. It's just going to be a matter of, you know, everybody getting their sea legs, so to speak. But a particular issue like that should be directed right to the principal's office, and then they'll direct it outward.
Okay, Elaine Dong from Oradell would like to know what you are doing to get kids with learning disabilities like ADHD and other learning issues back in the building sooner. This is different from LLD. I didn't understand your answer as it relates to non-LLD. Thank you.
So we, we are, our plan of attack, our plan of action is to get the students that are in our LLD program back into the building as quickly as we can. It, it's, it's not likely that as a group of students that we will be able to bring in only children with ADHD or only children with IEPs because of the complexity of their schedule. Because not everybody is in a self-contained class. Not everybody's in a resource room class. Students are also in in-class support, and some students even with disabilities are participating in regular instruction. However, we do have some people available to provide some additional assistance to students that have disabilities. And if your child has an IEP, I suggest that you speak to the case manager, who will be able to direct you. If your child has a 504, you should direct that question to the principal's office because there are the 504 officers in both buildings. So I, I think it's unlikely that as a group of students beyond the LLD program that will be back in the building before October 5th.
Next question is from Heather Goldstein of River Edge. Since this is a longer school day than virtual days in March through June by about two hours, I've already heard of students complaining about headaches from looking at the computer all day. Maybe that should be considered, and there could be some breaks from the computer throughout the day.
It's a great question. I, screen fatigue is something that we're trying to get a handle on. Obviously, we're not going to judge it after a couple of days of instruction. We have to keep our eye on it. And there have been considerations, discussions about what would happen and how we could provide some type of break time available to kids. I, I don't have a clear answer on when that would be, what format it would be, but it's certainly something that is on everyone's radar screen.
Do we have any more questions?
Zenobia Busha.
Yes, hi, hi, everybody. This is Zenobia Busha from Oradell. As a new seventh grade parent, I think I speak for many of us that these last few weeks leading up to school have been very confusing for us. The communication needs to be more precise and timely, especially for us new parents who don't understand. Our schedule was sent that it took a lot of us, a lot of time to figure out, instead of just putting it for seventh grade, eighth grade. The communication about the virtual school, back to school tomorrow, and not being a half-day versus a full session was sent out at 4:30 today. Before that, I was trying to rack my head, trying to figure out what is the one-session communication? Because your website is not yet updated. The bell schedule there still shows last year's times. So I, more than a question, it's more a comment for seventh grade parents. We are really struggling here, trying to understand what is expected from our students and from us the first few weeks. More precise communication targeted towards us? And maybe timely, not just 24 hours before it's going to happen? Because I am the kind of person who likes to know things a few days in advance to plan. So that would be very helpful. I struggled a lot figuring out the half-day schedule. I didn't want to disturb the school, so I didn't email anybody. And then I find out it's a full-day schedule. So just a comment. And I'm sure a lot of seventh grade parents who are listening to me are probably agreeing that we've, we've struggled a little with all of this.
My apologies for that.
No, no, but thank you. I mean, for everything you guys are doing.
You are most welcome.
I know.
Very valid.
About a lot of people.
Very valid. Thank you.
Okay, if that's it with the questions, we're going to move into the committee report. We'll start with Budget and Finance, Alan. What do you have for us?
We had a finance meeting on last Wednesday night. Anything we need to open the school safely, we can accommodate and purchase that. We've spent about $90,000 so far, and we have applied for grants from Alyssa's Law and from the CARES Act funding. We should get both, and this will help us with the funding of what we had to purchase.
Okay. Facilities and Security, Doug.
Last Thursday, we had a committee meeting in which we walked the high school building to review progress on modifying the classrooms for social distancing, looking at signage, and all of the PPE that has been put in place, and discussed our schedule for having everything completed 100% by our October 5th opening. And we will have another walkthrough of the middle school this coming week to review that facility.
Okay, thank you. Community Relations and Technology, John.
Hello, we also had a committee meeting. And we understand, and I think Mr. Fletcher just touched on all the information that's being shared with the public. On the website, we have a specific section that provides a lot of information called Riverdale Reopening Plan. It's on the website under Parent and Community Resources. It's the last item all the way at the bottom. There's a lot of information here. But we understand it might be a little confusing, or maybe people don't have the time to read these documents. Unfortunately, they are long because the plan is very, very intricate. So the committee is working with administration to create a frequently asked questions, which will be posted in that same section. If you look at that particular page on the Parent and Community Resources, again, all the way at the bottom, and I think it's also on the main page, you'll see a frequently asked question document there. That document is being revised to pull out a lot of the critical information out of the reopening plan and other relevant information that Mr. Fletcher and other administrators have shared. We're looking to make this a permanent section on the website, which will make it easy. There's a lot of parents asking good questions that Mr. Fletcher is responding to. The goal is to convert these into frequently asked questions and put them on the website to help all the parents. So that was one major takeaway. That's in the works. We're hoping it could be posted this week. And then some form of communication, hopefully, to the, to the community. The second item that was of major topic is, I think, the entire board and the administration desires to go back. What we can't control is health conditions. And if we continue to stay remote due to health concerns, we ask the administration to explore additional ways to improve the technology. So there's some comments around teams, but we ask the school to look at and pilot other things that'll make the teaching experience better. Some of those things are being looked at. Additional technologies are being explored. So these were the two major takeaways, the last one being the website. It's a major resource for us. We understand there's a lot there. So we are looking at better ways to put more information on the website and communicate it with the parents. That was the major takeaways from our committee.
Okay, thank you very much, John. Stephanie, do you have anything with curriculum?
Curriculum, you'll see two documents on tonight's agenda. It's just the final passage of the astronomy and the hospitality tourism courses. We were tweaking from last meeting, but it, the curriculum is obviously under delivery already since school has started. And we had a conversation, and we'll continue to have a conversation over maintaining delivery of the curriculum as best afforded by all of the different kind of models that are going to be happening throughout the school year, and making sure all of those essential elements are delivered. And, and that'll be done by administration supervisors, and of course, in collaboration with all of the instructional staff.
Okay, thank you. Policy and Governance, Claudia, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I do. We do not physically need to have a meeting, but we are working on Policy 9322, which will give us an update to our board meetings, both executive and regular sessions for a virtual component. This is just guidance that has come out from the state that we need to update into our policy. So we're working on that.
Okay, thank you. Let's move into the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion. It's Claudia.
Thank you, Claudia. Second?
I'll second. It's Doug.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda? It's very short tonight. Okay, Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy, Alan?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay, we have a vote here under Roman numeral 10, Finance District Operation Number 6. Whereas the Riverdale Board of Education has resolved to join the School Alliance Insurance Fund following a detailed analysis. And whereas the bylaws of SAIF require that each entity designate a risk management consultant to perform various professional services as detailed in the bylaws and risk management plan. And whereas the bylaws indicate that SAIF shall pay each risk, risk management consultant a fee to be established annually by the executive committee. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Riverdale BOE does hereby appoint Polaris Galaxy Group as its risk management consultant in accordance with its own bylaws. May I have a motion?
So moved to Alan.
I'm sorry. Any questions about this, sir Hertz? No? Okay, motion, Alan. Thank you. Second?
I'll second. Tracy.
Tracy. Thank you, Tracy. Okay, Tom, when you're ready, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy and Alan?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes.
That moves us to old business. How about new business?
Al, I have something. It's Alan.
Yes.
I continue to see our track being used as a bicycle racing oval. You know, I've mentioned to Tom a few times. I don't know where the, the Oradell police are. That, they're not obviously watching the cameras at all. These kids are doing wheelies. They're, they're digging up the track. Now, we've talked about replacing this track with a new track. I am not going to vote in favor of that until we get some sort of a handle or a lock on the track or something because these kids are younger and, just like on Deepak, where they're destroying it already by letting kids on with their bicycles and all. Now they're doing it on our field. So I don't know what we have to do with the police to control it, but something's got to be done. Tom, you have any suggestions?
Let me get back to you, Alan, because I know the police are cognizant of this. And it's usually after hours, after our crew is gone and after our teams have done practicing. And on weekends, of course.
Yeah, it usually happens at around four, five o'clock at night.
Mm-hmm. After all, our activities are completed.
Right.
Alan, we need those spikes that they have in parking garages that we can put up after hours. And then, you know, they come up and they go down. I think that would be an excellent solution.
Okay. Yeah.
I have one comment. There was a member of the public who spoke earlier and said they didn't want to bother the school when the information on the website was wrong and their kid was left in the waiting room. I, I think we should encourage the parents to reach out to the administration, to the principals of the buildings, if they see information that's out of date or areas where there could be improvement. Because I think if you don't share this information directly with the principals, it's great to bring it to the board, but the principals in each of the buildings have the ability to directly take care of this when you notice it and see it. And I think you shouldn't look at it as bothering, you know, the buildings or I think this is the kind of feedback that's necessary from the public in order to improve these types of things. So if you see issues, unless, Mr. Fletcher, that's the wrong place to direct them, they should bring that to the attention of the building management, which is the principals, so they can take action.
Absolutely. Please never fear the ability to reach out to the principal's office. You may not get a direct answer from them because they may, you know, point to somebody else to get back to you, but you should never look upon that as a bother, please.
Absolutely. And look, I, I think that the board here, a lot of us have students in the, in the district. I, I think this is a partnership with the community. I think if you share your feedback in a constructive manner with, with the buildings, I think this is the best thing we can ask for. And if you don't get a, a response or satisfactory response, I think Mr. Fletcher's door is always open for escalations. But go through the principals first, share the feedback, and give them the opportunity to make the adjustment as we kind of see. I'm sure some of the teachers are struggling with it, and they'll get better with it. It might be the technology, and that's an opportunity to have our tech team look at it. But I would absolutely bring it, but I would absolutely bring these concerns to the building administrators and give them a chance to address it.
Absolutely, John. And especially being the parent of a new seventh grader, this schedule can make your head spin if it's the first time you're trying to figure it out. Any other new business? Any other public comments on anything to do with the Riverdale School District? May I make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion. It's Claudia.
Second?
I'll second it. It's Alan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Good night.
Page 49, Tom.
Yes, sir.